Thank you. All right, I'd like to go ahead and bring the public hearing section of the Warrenton Board of Alderman Meeting for August 15, 2017 under order. Jack Hannah, if you could please come to the front podium.
This is a proposed text amendment revision to Section 410 subdivision regulations, ADM-91. Motion for approval passed seven to zero with two absent and one vacancy at the August 3, 2017 Plan Zoning Commission meeting with no additional conditions. I'd like to ask to make part of the public hearing record of the municipal code by reference the public hearing notice in my planning zoning report.
Be duly noted.
Thank you.
Did you, are we going to discuss this later in the agenda?
Yes, sir.
Do you want to discuss them now?
No, I was just going to ask him to give us an overall recap as to what precipitated the actions and the history of it, that's all.
If anybody would like to come forward and speak just on the Section 410 subdivision regulations of ADM-91, please feel free to come forward. We'll just ask you to say your name, state your business, and we'll give you a five-minute time at the podium. I've seen anybody. We'll go ahead and bring the public hearing section of the Warrenton Board of Alderman Meeting for August 15, 2017 to close. We will open the regular Board of Alderman Meeting for August 15, 2017 at this time. I'd ask you to rise and say the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the great law for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next item will be the consent agenda.
First item is the regular meeting minutes from August 1, 2017. We have approval to hire James Plackmire as a police officer at $17.23 an hour with a start date of August 14, 2017. Approval to hire Joseph Lanigan as a building technician at $12 an hour with a start date of August 14, 2017. And approval to hire Michael Cross as a building inspector at $18.50 an hour with a start date of August 28, 2017.
Any questions or comments? I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda items.
So moved.
Okay, we're not starting.
Second.
Motion made by Alderman Schultz, second by Alderman Shaw. Roll call vote, please.
Alderman John Miller is absent. Alderman Schultz?
Yes.
Alderman Cheryl Harvey?
Yes.
Alderman Costello is absent. Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Gary Miller?
Yes.
Motion passes four to zero with two absent. All right, next will be the introduction, and I'll let each department head introduce their individuals.
We'd like to introduce James Plackmire. He's our newest police officer. His first shift is actually tomorrow night, so.
It's nice to meet you. Welcome aboard.
Thanks, James.
I'd like to introduce Joseph Lanigan. He started Monday already as the new co-enforcement officer.
Welcome, Art.
Thank you.
All right, next item in the agenda will be hearing from the public. We ask for you to come forward and speak at the podium, state your name, state your business, and we'll give you five minutes to speak. And if you have something on the agenda later, this isn't the time to do it. Later we'll address those issues. All right, not seeing anybody, we'll move on to the Board of Alderman Comments.
Well, I think it would probably be inappropriate that if we did not thank the public for the vote on the bond issue. That was outstanding result and saved the taxpayers a lot of money by approving the bonds, so I was very excited to see the results of the election.
I was too. I think with it passing in all three boards was outstanding, and seventy percent is very hard to get.
My only comment is I wish people would get out to vote more. I know it's not just this last election, but the municipal election in April, you know, we had very low voter turnout, and it's something that is kind of maybe my pet peeve or something like that. One of the items I look at is, you know, we're building this, we're having this great tribute to the veterans memorial built out here, and to me, part of that respect that we could show the veterans, not only the ones that gave their lives, but the ones that are still walking around here local and that we see every day, and I know that, you know, you see people say, "Thank you for your service," and everything like that. I think one of the best gestures in thanking these guys for their service would be getting out and voting and showing them that you appreciate what they have given up so that we can keep the right to vote, that we can, that we still have the right to vote and the democracy to do it. So, that's the only thing. I would urge people to get out to vote. I know eighty and ninety-year-old people that get out to vote, so it's not that much of an inconvenience. Your employers give you the time off to do it, so, like I say, it's kind of my pet peeve, but again, I would urge, I think it's out of respect to everybody that has served, to get out and vote. I'll get off my soapbox now, so.
Well said. Can I?
No, we're going to the game, and I thought it ought to be.
I don't have anything extraordinary to share.
The springboard off a couple of things that a couple of our aldermen have said. Once again, I appreciate everybody who did come out and vote. It's your constitutional right, exercise it. A lot of people don't have that right, and if you've ever traveled, or if you, there again relating back to have been in the military, you know that some people don't have that right in other countries. It's a great, great responsibility and right that we have in our country, and it should be fully utilized. But with that being said, I'd like to say thank you to several aldermen that came out and visited me while I was in the hospital, but one in particular would be Alderman Schultz who sat there on his phone the whole time tracking the votes and let me know exactly how it was going while I was in the bed, so I appreciate that. I also wanted to let everybody know that because of the eclipse, which we may not be making as big of a deal as some towns are, we will be closing City Hall from 12 to 2 to allow employees to go out and see the eclipse. After 2:00 PM, we'll be resuming regular thing, regular business here at City Hall. So, if anybody's watching, just be prepared from 12 to 2, City Hall will be closed for that amount of time to watch the eclipse.
That's on the 21st, if you don't know when it is already.
There's the Alderman Schultz comment. August 21st.
Just one comment on that to kind of follow up with your, what you're saying, and maybe this is a question for Chief Ellard. Has there been any, I noticed some other cities have talked about it, but has there been any kind of plans, coordination with emergency preparedness or emergency fire department, EMTs, police, sheriff's department, everything?
We, yes, we've coordinated and basically what, we're going to treat it like an ice event, a snow event. Particularly, we foresee if there's going to be a problem, it's going to be traffic on 70, which will handle like any other traffic event on 70. If, you know, while I've got the soapbox, I'd like to say, if people are driving, please don't pull to the side of the road and watch the eclipse. If you're going somewhere to watch the eclipse, get there early, stay there until it's done, and then continue on your journey.
And you know what, and you think about that, it's a good point. I mean, we have several parks that are available for anybody to go into and view it. Don't make it a nuisance or more traffic hazards on the side of the road. Thank you for bringing that up.
No problem.
You know, I'm sure we can accommodate in the park area for you guys to be able to watch or bring your chairs and be able to sit up and see. It's safe and it's more convenient in that area, spread out. You want to say anything?
That was all I had, so, thanks.
We'll move on to the next item, which would be the request to have a color run walk on October 7, 2017. I believe we have a representative here, is that correct? Roseanne Garland?
Hi, I'm Rosie, and this is Brandy, the president of our PTO.
Okay, and Brandy Tittle, is that correct? Come on forward to the podium, please. If you wouldn't mind speaking your name as well, we'll, we'll.
Hi, my name is Brandy Tittle. I'm the president at Rebecca Boone School here in town, and this is Roseanne Garland.
Hello.
And she's our secretary, and we're asking for permission to have a color run October the 7th. And just be, it's our big fundraiser for our school, and it's something we can involve the public in and other schools, so working hard for that. Just be a 5K walk run. We don't need any road closures or anything. Just ask permission to have that and throw color.
Now, you guys did this last year too, correct?
Rebecca Boone has not, no.
Okay, but I guess one of the other schools did do one, I believe.
Jonesburg has done one in the past.
I thought I could have swore my kids brought some from Blackhawk.
I think the Blackhawk might have did one, but that was during school hours.
Yeah, I believe it was after hours, but I think it was Blackhawk was doing it. It was kind of, the kids really got involved, they enjoyed it.
Yeah, and they stayed right there on the premises.
Right, yeah, exactly. But they were very excited about it, so it sounded like it was a great event. Any questions? All right, so entertain a motion to approve the color run walk on October 7, 2017.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Alderman Schultz, second by Alderman Gary Miller, Republican.
Alderman Cheryl Harvey?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Gary Miller?
Yes.
Alderman Schultz?
Yes.
Motion passes four to zero with two absent.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
All right, next item in the agenda would be the request to close the following roads on September 23, 2017 for a 5K run for Slim's Journey. Jeff Myers, if you'd like to come up, and if your wife would like to ask what you can do. We never invite her, so I figured we'd do it this time.
Well, that's very nice.
Thank you, Jeff.
I'm going to try to take the oil all by myself this time.
We're saying that because they, they, we're always happy to see it, so.
Mayor, members of the board, thank you very much. Welcome, yes, this is our sixth time of hearing here to request that we can shut down the roadways so we can have our 5K fundraiser for FARA, which is the Friedrichs Ataxia Research Alliance. Last year we broke the $100,000 mark, which was very exciting for us and looking to just keep building on that. We usually have anywhere in the ballpark between 200 to 250 participants, give or take a few. What I'm, what we're asking for is to be able to shut down Highway M to do a rolling stop at 7:45, when the runners take off at 8, follow that down to Truesdale. We'll have Truesdale officers on the other end shutting down that traffic, and then once we're off of Highway M, to open that back up so businesses can have access to the traffic through there, and then as, as the field comes through, we asked to shut down Cool, both directions from Voschall all the way back up to Highway M, and then with the help of the Warrenton Police Department, hopefully, to be able to have some crossing, to be able to get our participants back over to the United Methodist Church parking lot. Also, as we have in the past years, we do not have volunteers out on the whole route, and so what I've, I've had a stencil that I've used for the past five to just spray the directions on the, on the asphalt itself. That way, because there are some, some turns as it gets back through there and winds through the neighborhood, that way nobody gets off course.
I think it wears out pretty quickly. I don't think we've ever had any issue.
It does, I have to touch it up every year.
You guys, we've never had any issue with those. Yeah. I think it's only been really, it wears out within a month or less.
I've even heard people say that they use it to kind of train what to.
And it may be, it may be a great training tool, it really may be. Well, I appreciate it.
Well, thank you.
Any questions?
I think it's all going pretty smooth in the past, so.
For six years. All right, I'll entertain a motion to approve the road closures on September 23, 2017 for a 5K run for Slim's Journey.
So moved.
Motion made by Alderman Cheryl Harvey, second by Alderman Schultz. Roll call vote, please.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Gary Miller?
Yes.
Alderman Schultz?
Yes.
Alderman Cheryl Harvey?
Yes.
Motion carries four to zero with two absent. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
All right, next item would be the request to close East Walton Road from Highway 47 to Cool from 5, 5 to 8:00 PM for Warrenton Baptist Church on October 31, 2017.
Is there any representatives here tonight that would like to speak on that?
All right. Any questions?
I think this is what they did last year, is just for their Halloween.
Okay. Any questions or comments? All right, I'll entertain a motion to approve the, to close East Walton from Highway 47 to Cool from 5 to 8:00 PM on October 31, 2017.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Alderman Gary Miller, second by Alderman Cheryl Harvey. Roll call vote, please.
Alderman Gary Miller?
Yes.
Alderman Schultz?
Yes.
Alderman Cheryl Harvey?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Motion carries four to zero with two absent. All right, next item in the agenda is certification of election results from August 8, 2017, which we've already talked about was, I'm happy to be able to stay. Anybody else up here who isn't there? Any questions? I will entertain a motion to approve the certification of election results from August 8, 2017 on Proposition 8.
So moved.
It will go with Alderman Cheryl Harvey, seconded by Alderman Schultz.
Alderman Schultz?
Yes.
Alderman Cheryl Harvey?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Miller?
Yes.
Motion carries four to zero with two absent. Next item would be the approval of building and Cool remediation bid and compaction testing. Is that correct?
Good evening, Mayor and Board. I have placed up there in front of you the bid from KCI Construction, and this is for them to get the pad repaired and meet the specs for the soil testing, so they have to make sure that it's all compacted correctly underneath the pool to get the pads all ready. The second one behind that is from SEI. They would basically be on site to test the soil as they compact it to make sure that it is at the right, that it meets the specs that they have, they have stated.
KCI is the only one we're dealing with, correct?
Correct.
That's in the amount of 154,950?
Yes, plus the SEI one in the amount of 19,438.75.
So the total of both of them.
So the 19 gets added to the 154?
Correct.
Is this part of the general bid that was done by Bean, or is this something we're doing?
This is separate.
Mayor is doing math. Yeah, I'm not a, I'm not a do math guy. I rely on you and Alderman Ock and Alderman Schultz to do this, but they're not, so. So, do two motions. Do we want to do two suppers or just one?
It's two separate companies.
At the beginning, that would have made it so easy.
I wanted to watch you do math.
Yeah, thanks. Exactly. I'll go and entertain a motion to approve the bid from KCI in the amount of $154,950. So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Alderman Ock, seconded by Alderman Gary Miller. Roll call vote, please.
Alderman Cheryl Harvey?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Gary Miller?
Yes.
Alderman Schultz?
Yes.
Motion passes four to zero with two absent. And I will entertain a motion for the approval from SEI. Was it, what is it, SEI?
SEI.
SEI for in the amount of $19,438.75.
So moved.
Second. Motion made by Alderman Cheryl Harvey, seconded by Alderman Ock. Roll call vote, please.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Gary Miller?
Yes.
Alderman Schultz?
Yes.
Alderman Cheryl Harvey?
Yes.
Motion carries four to zero with two absent.
And I will let you know that they're going to begin construction September 1st.
Wow, great. So when do we start swimming? Well, there's a lake out there. Probably September 1st, fall next year. There's a lake so much out there. You think the city's got a lot of people that'll swim in the lake? What do you think about that, Terry? Someone in the lake? Or will they, will they get visited by Chief Ellard? Yeah, I think the answer is no.
I'm not sure swimming in the lake is probably a good idea.
Well, I don't think it's a smart idea at all. All right. Next item would be the discussion of Jordan's Place Service Agreement. And we have some representatives, please come forward and just state your name.
Hi, my name is Kelly Cladfelter, and I am a co-founder and co-president of Jordan's Place Teen Hangout. And I believe, first of all, let me apologize that we were not here at the last meeting. I don't really understand the process, so please forgive me. I didn't realize that I needed to follow up with another meeting, so I felt pretty bad I wasn't here. But I do know that some questions came arise at your last meeting, so we are here today to hopefully be able to answer those so that we can move forward.
I think the main thing was, it's too bad Alderman Costello wasn't here because I think he was one that had the most, the main questions about, I think it was mainly just the budget and everything.
And I know he wasn't here the night that I spoke. I don't think he had joined you guys at that point, but one of the things I definitely, I understand that was brought up was the fact of like how we were going to be able to handle the rest of our budget, and I kind of have a split answer to that. I do have a page that we forwarded through Terry for you guys to look at, at our already projected fundraisers that we're going to do. But basically, for the last two years, we have fundraised nonstop to cover our entire budget, which has put us in a damper of not being able to buy new supplies for JP. All of our games are breaking down. We've not been able to move much in the direction of different programs within our facility because every dime has had to go to pay in our overhead. But if, we have several big events. One of the biggest that we have coming is we're working on JP's first annual country benefit concert where we're going to be at River City Rascal Sports Complex, and we sent you guys a flyer about that as well to just kind of let you know who we're working with, which is Shotgun Creek, who is sponsored by Chuck Boots, and they're also trying to bring in a few other singers on that. We're working with Express Scripts to be a sponsor for us. Also, one thing I don't see listed on here is Express Scripts did a pretty good fundraiser for us last year with a mouse race, brought in over $6,000, and they're wanting to make that an annual thing with us, which would be coming up in November. So we do have several ways of being able to bring in money in fundraising.
I think that was the thing, the detail now that you have on there is excellent.
Okay.
So that is definitely, and it's funny you bring up Shotgun Creek because they were at the concert in the park in July, and they were excellent, so that would be.
Yeah, we're meeting KS.
KS baby.
I always mess those letters up. Tomorrow to promote that as well. So, and with us doing this location, we're going to be bringing in, you know, people from all around, not just Warrenton, so we're hoping to really turn this into a pretty big thing.
Emo's is going. Emo's is going to promote it for us too, the week of the show, on all their social media. They're giving us coupons to give away and all kinds of things. We're also doing a pizza fundraiser with them on the 31st.
Excellent, so, I'm glad to hear you're active in doing.
Oh, yeah.
Any other questions?
I guess.
That was basically it.
The detail now is.
Yeah. I totally get it. I totally get it, and I really apologize. I had no idea I needed to be here. I would have been here. I apologize for not being here.
Now, this, this is going to be an ordinance later, so we're not going to do a motion right now, but we're going to do it later on in bills to ordinance.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we'll hear from Director of Operations and Finance Officer Terry Thorne.
The only thing I have for you this evening is just the, we've scheduled both the regular, special board meeting to set the tax rate. That will be on August 30 at 6:00 PM, followed at 6:15 by the rescheduled work session on downtown incentives. So we'll be doing both those on the same night.
One question. I know at the last meeting, again, I think it was Alderman Costello brought it up about the, having a follow-up with the Better Roads Forward group, and before I approached them, I wanted to know, do we want to do that in an open meeting or one of our work sessions? And if we, could we do it at this work session if we wanted to, or what do you think, Terry?
Well, I'm glad you brought that up because today Chris and I had a call with Ethan, Ethan Todd, and he asked how we would like to proceed with them. He said he is going to be attending a meeting with them later this week, and so he was going to get a volunteer from that group to come to the next board meeting or a future board meeting and speak to the board and answer those questions, and then following that, Ethan will come out and meet at a meeting with us and attend a regular board meeting to kind of talk about his role in all of that. So I think he's got that moving forward based on the conversation we had with him today.
I figured that's who we would probably, that's who I had planned to go through, but I wanted to know what ground, what ground rules were before I approached him, but it sounds like he's already ahead of the game.
Yeah, he was inquiring about how we wanted to proceed forward and, you know, what the board was looking for, so it was a great opportunity to have him kind of take the role of putting that all together for us.
And I like the idea of doing it in a public meeting as opposed to a work session because it's something the public needs to be aware of whatever's going on, so they're current and aware of, you know, issues that we have to deal with, going by 70 quarter.
That's fine.
So as soon as we get a response back from him, we'll let you know when that's forthcoming.
And they haven't had a meeting yet that I could attend to, so I haven't had a chance to ask them, so.
Okay, that sounds good.
Thank you.
You're welcome. So that's the rescheduled night will be August 30, and we'll take care of both those things that evening.
Excellent.
And that's all I have. Thank you.
All right. Any questions? All right. Next, we'll hear from Zoning Officer and Building Commissioner Jack Hannah.
First thing, I'd like to thank you guys, Mayor and Board, for giving this opportunity the higher of the new co-enforcement officer and a new building inspector. Really thrilled to be working, getting the opportunity to work with them. First item I have is my monthly building co-enforcement report, and instead of going over our normal top three violations, I want to share some good news with you. In July, we had seven new house starts, and that's the first time that we've had seven new starts in one month since March of 2008.
That's enough to celebrate, right there.
That's pretty exciting.
Well, I'm glad, I'm glad you had that because according to the record, you know, we, front page was Wright City and Truesdale Building Boom, and that's what we've got. Maybe we get involved in it.
You knew he was going to drop it on you, Adam. You knew it. I said, you knew he was going to drop it on you, Adam.
And that brings us to a total so far, key word so far, 13 for the year, and it was 2009 was the last time we've had 13 or more in a year, so I think that's very exciting and.
Very good news.
Things are coming to life for us.
Are most of the starts in a specific area, or is it kind of all over?
North and south of town, we've had, we've had starts, so.
I noticed a couple go up behind the Crider Center there.
Mm-hmm.
Bruni Parkway.
I think there's two, actually. Two, popping up real quick. And that's the Jaeger area?
Yes, Jaeger Construction's putting them two in.
So I think we looked at three months ago or so, four months ago.
If you don't have any questions, the next thing. If you don't have any questions, the next thing I have is a request for the Ruthers Estates record plat. I do not see anybody here from Louis Beatty, but apparently when they went to go record Ruthers Subdivision at the county, that name already existed. So they had to change the name to Ruthers Estates. It's the exact same plat. Everything's the same. They just are changing the name to Ruthers Estates instead of Ruthers Subdivision like you previously approved.
That's a major difference.
Bill's to ordinance later too.
Yeah. It'll be in, it will be in the bills to ordinance later, I believe, right?
Yeah, number twenty E.
And then the next item I have is the proposed tax amendment to section four-ten subdivision regulations, ADM ninety-one. And this is basically, Mr. Ock, you had asked earlier, it's to make sure while we're going through approving subdivision regulations and subdivision sites, that not only do we get the sidewalks, where are they going to go and get the agreement that they're going to be installed, but to make sure we also have specific sidewalk easements. So we don't have to go try to track them down later. Is what brought that up.
There will also be a bill to ordinance later. Any questions?
No, that's good.
Next item?
Next item I have is a request for approval to purchase a Ford pickup truck from Marshall Ford. They were the low bidder, lower than the state bid. And the budgeted amount was twenty-three thousand and their bid amount was twenty-two thousand, seven hundred and twenty-two dollars. And I did contact local Chevy dealer, not only in person, but sent follow-up emails and they failed to submit any bids for it. So I don't know if they just couldn't do it or what. But I did contact them.
Any questions? All right, I'll entertain a motion to approve the bid from Marshall Ford for two thousand seventeen Ford F-150 half-ton truck. The amount of twenty-two thousand, seven hundred and twenty-two dollars, low bid.
One question. I think you said seventeen. I think this is a twenty-eighteen, isn't it? According to the, what I see on the order confirmation.
It'll, it'll be a twenty-eighteen truck.
Okay.
By the time they order.
No, we're correct. That is. I stand corrected on the Marshall Ford for two thousand eighteen Ford F-150. So moved.
I'll second that motion.
Motion made by Alderman Scholl, second by Alderman Schultz. Roll call, please.
Alderman Gary Miller?
Yes.
Alderman Schultz?
Yes.
Alderman Schell Harvey?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Motion carries four zero with two S's.
Next item I have is a request permission to purchase three Ford Fusions. The state bid was the lowest on this one. They were two hundred and seventy-one dollars per vehicle, less than Marshall Ford. Once again, I did contact the Chevy dealer to see if they could give us a price on a comparable Chevy. So the total amount for all three of them is fifty-two thousand, forty-one dollars even. And one will go to Building Department, one will go to Police Department, and one will go to Administrative Department.
Jack, are these replacement vehicles or new? Are they being replaced?
It will be a new vehicle for my department and for Administrative Department. And I don't know if it'll be a replacement or a new vehicle for the Police Department.
It's a replacement.
It's a replacement?
For admin.
Oh, it's a replacement.
It'll be a replacement for Police also.
Then will, will we then advertise the older vehicles for, okay.
So the, is this replacing the Topaz or whatever it is as well?
Temple.
No. The Temple, stay for another year.
Have the Temples in the Building Department.
We have to, we have to use that Temple.
I think it needs to be a permanent fixture in there.
It's a great golf cart.
I think it needs to be our council's new car.
Well, you're not going to go very far very fast.
All right, I will entertain a motion to approve the purchase of three, and I'm hoping I got this right, two thousand seventeen Ford Fusions from Joe, is it?
Mockins.
Mockins Ford, in the amount of fifty-two thousand, forty-one dollars, the state low bid.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Alderman Schultz, second by Alderman Gary Miller. Roll call, please.
Alderman Schultz?
Yes.
Alderman Schell Harvey?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Gary Miller?
Yes.
Motion carries four zero with two S's.
The last thing I have is regarding the Boozy Cruise Edition subdivision plat. This is, was originally submitted to Planning and Zoning and approved by Planning and Zoning on June the second, nineteen ninety-one. It was then presented to the Board of Aldermen for review and approval on June the twenty-fifth, nineteen ninety-one. We cannot find any record of the plat ever being signed by the mayor, so it could be recorded. And we verified with the county, it's never been recorded. So we're trying to see if you would approve the plat as it was originally drawn. The only thing that's changed is the name. Obviously, it's a different mayor and city clerk, and it was Brad's parents, now it's Brad's. All the dimensions, everything is exactly the same, so he can go, get it recorded to finally make it a legal plat.
I was going to say, Mike, if you already say you remember that, maybe I'm going to throw something at you. Because I don't remember it.
I know.
Yeah, yeah, votes Alderman Schell Harvey and Alderman Ock voted on it. June the twenty-fifth, nineteen ninety-one.
That's been all her ego that voted on it.
I shouldn't change my vote tonight, right?
Sometimes you don't want to.
No, that's true. There's been a few of those too. This will be a, a bill to ordinance later on in the meeting.
Okay.
And that's it. Thank you, guys.
Any further questions for Jack? All right. And move on to Maintenance and Grounds Director Brad Boosie, please.
Good evening, Mayor and Board. The, you have my building, or my grounds report here. Still doing a lot of grass cutting, doing a lot of maintenance. Some of the projects we did finish up are, well, shouldn't say, we thought we had it finished. The electric on Main Street was, we had it all, everything done. Then the concert goers decided they needed three-phase across the street over here. So I've got Ameren working on that and we're going to have to add a three-phase meter and panel box now. So that shouldn't be too big, big a thing. But everything else, I wanted to show in Gert House, the one in front of the new winery, the one by Jordan's Place, and the one down here are all completed, all fired up. Meters are in. So we're just going to have a, just another small little thing to do down for the, get the three-phase for, for the band. So we'll have that done as soon as I find out from Ameren. Because I think we can pull three-phase off the back behind Alan Kimball's office. If not, it's going to cost us about ten thousand. And Randy said she, we can. She doesn't have a budget for that, but I think what they do, I've still got money left in the budget from what we did to cover it if we can tap into their three-phase behind there.
Was part of that tourism?
Yes, all, all this is tourism.
Okay.
Tourism paid for all this. So I've got, I've got some money left over that hopefully will cover the, what we're getting ready. If, if everything goes, goes accordingly, we're, we should have money to do it. So unless we have to set new, new transformers, then we're, I don't think we're going to, we're going to be doing it, so.
So six point two-five hours on irrigation repairs. Isn't that correct?
Do what now?
Six, six point two-five on irrigation repairs?
Yeah.
Curious as to what happened.
Oh, we, they, ever since we put it in, we've had cross Ts and stuff blow off. They just, just old, they just get wore out. Ten years old system. They just, we replace them all the time. We keep them on hand. Tom watches them and they get hit, you know, kids out playing. They'll take them apart for us and do a few other things, so.
How nice of them.
You know, yeah, just, just keeps us on, on our toes.
Why just send those kids over to Jordan's Place?
Yeah.
They may disagree with you on that.
And then some of the other stuff, we, we put a new well in, or a new A.C. unit in well four. I had to do some, guys went over there and cut some holes and stuff and put new, new A.C. unit in, in there to eliminate the dehumidifier that's been running nonstop. So it did that, power washed the booster station and stuff. I don't know if some of y'all noticed, probably noticed there's been a little mold on it and stuff, so we got that done. Then we've been painting a lot of the Cory and Lakeview rest rooms have been painted. We did a lot of, over the winter, we did a lot of repairs. We got back over there to get, get the painting done. And right now, we're out on the Andorra Waterway, working on that. We're probably going to be out there a couple more days at least, get that cleaned up. And then Justin will be going to the, to a basic electricity, electricity course, the twenty-eighth and twenty-ninth of this month, so.
Easy for you to say. Electricity.
Yeah. So.
So are we done installing all of the, well, wrong report. Let me wait till the next guy. I'm reading ahead, sorry, Brad.
You what?
I'm reading ahead, sorry.
Oh.
I have a question, Brad, when you talk about painting. Do you have on your schedule for anytime soon the sanding and painting of the entrance to our city cemetery?
Yeah, that's, hopefully we're going to get to that later this fall. We're, we're just, we've got so much. This Andorra Waterway's taken quite a bit, and then we've got some other, and we're going to have to start out at the park soon. So that's all my guys are going to be probably going out there. So we'll, we'll try to work in because we got to, we want to get that part done, so we're not going to slow anybody up, so.
Who does the maintenance on the lawnmowers?
We do.
I mean, you have somebody in staff?
Wayne, Wayne does, yeah. Wayne, one of my guys, he's one, we do as much in-house that we can. Some of the stuff takes specialized tools and we don't have the, you know, we're.
I don't know how old those mowers are, but he must do a fantastic job of servicing them because.
Yeah, we try to service, service them every hundred hours, I think. We change the blades every fifty hours and just normal. This is, was it a couple of years ago, Terry, we decided to keep them? We, we like to trade them ever, when, when they, every couple of years old, we'd like to trade them. This year, we've got some of them that are going on three years old and have over, getting close to three thousand, four thousand hours on them, so. So next, next year's budget, y'all might see a few more coming, coming in. But some of our, yeah, we're getting quite a few hours on a lot, lot of them.
Does that drive, Tuesday morning is my drive through the cemetery morning, and those guys do a fantastic job.
I'll pass that along to them there.
Any other questions?
Excuse me. I would also like to mention that Brad and his crew did an excellent job, again, this summer, having Dire Park ready for the concerts in the park. I mean, everybody comments on it, that it's always in good shape. Even the bands made a comment on how much they like the stage. It's always clean and so, again, good job on that.
I'll pass that along to the guys then.
Yeah.
Any further, Brad?
That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we'll hear from Public Works Director Guy Jivers.
Good evening, Mayor and Board. First time I have is a monthly report. We've done some sewer main repairs on Hawthorne Drive. That was a pretty big project. Installed some culvert pipe on East Veteran Memorial. Installed about four hundred feet of thirty-six inch culvert pipe at the new park after the road was graded out for water drainage. We had a, two sewer calls for the month. Both of them were on private, so none was on the city. Any questions?
Yeah, my question was, are we done with all the work we're doing at the memorial site? Are they still waiting for us or?
They're, we are waiting, we have a schedule from Wendell.
Okay.
They need to grade the road in their parking lot. And once they get it down to grade, then Louis and Beatty is going to come out, mark where the storm catch basins need to go, and then we need to follow back up. The Wendell Webb ordered the parts, because that all goes through them. We don't have any billing or nothing. They deliver it to us and then we install it. We have a timeline, and I believe it's September, somewhere around September, that they got a goal of getting that basin that put in. So, and we just, we don't take out of our time. We just squeeze it in when we have the opportunity. So, and that's what that culvert pipe on East Veteran Memorial was for. That was the first stretch that we did, and we got it stubbed out to finish up the rest.
Okay. Any other questions? You want next item?
Next item I have is the rock bid. And we had three bids, holster trucking and Central Stone bid, and it shows low, lower bids than the rest of them. But Central Stone didn't include delivery, so that was Xed out. And I might butcher this, but Hayes and Jaeger, Hoss and Jaeger. Trucking out of Martha'sville got the low bid. I need approval for that.
Make a motion, we approve Hoss and Jaeger trucking for the rock bid.
The amount of?
The amount of fifteen thousand, six hundred and eighty-nine dollars and thirty-five cents.
And that's just an estimated cost of what we plan on using for rock for the year. I threw the pool park in and then other projects. So we give them an idea of what, about how much rock we're going to use for the year. But the biggest item is line by line on cost, and even less than expensive line by line on cost, so.
I have a motion on the floor from Alderman Scholl Harvey. I need a second.
I'll second that motion.
Motion made by Alderman Scholl Harvey, second by Alderman Schultz. Roll call, please.
Alderman Schell Harvey?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Gary Miller?
Yes.
Alderman Schultz?
Yes.
Motion carries four zero with two S's.
That's all I have.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we'll hear from Chief of Police Larry.
Evening, Board. Besides the monthly report, I'd just like to share that the past two weeks, our officers have been wearing body worn cameras as part of test and evaluation from a company called Turnkey Mobile. They've got the state bid for Panasonic body worn cameras. They set up a server, their own downstairs for a test, and also put their triggering equipment, one of our patrol cars. And so far, all the reports have been excellent. They record excellent video. I'd like to extend the offer out. If any of you want to come down and check out the system or any of the videos of the cameras, stop by and let me know.
Hate to say it, I saw two of them last meeting goofing off with them. Not goofing off, but they were talking about it, so I walked downstairs and, like you said, it was, they, they were really happy. It seemed like, you know, sometimes I think it goes, being in law enforcement itself, it goes back and forth. Some, some people say, why do we have Big Brother watching over us? And others really accept it really well and say, hey, I have nothing to hide. All of our guys seem to say, we have nothing to hide. This is great for us. We can review things, and it backs us up. So I agree, it sounds like it's been a hit down there.
Yeah, so far, all the feedback has been positive.
Great. I love hearing that. Any questions?
I've had a couple of people ask me about having the police look at a situation. So if you're on, going south on, or north on Steinhegen by Veterans Memorial, there's a White House, there's a fire plug, and then it's across the street from the lawyer's office. Is it, I can't remember who the lawyer is.
Tim Joyce.
Tim Joyce's office. The stop sign sits really far back, and sometimes there's vehicles that sit really close to the fire plug. I don't know if they're too close, but it's almost impossible to pull out, make a left turn with getting clear vision. So I wonder if we can look at that to see if maybe we need to put no parking on that side of the street or see if we can do something to keep them farther back from the fire plug. Because you literally can't see out to make a left turn. And it, there's been a couple of close calls, I know that. So if you could check that, I appreciate it.
No problem.
Thank you. Yeah, Veterans Memorial. Any other questions? None? All right, thank you. All right, we have reached that point of the bills to ordinance. So I will entertain a motion for first reading of bill number fifty-eight dash seventeen. Call for first reading.
Second.
Motion made by Alderman Ock, seconded by Alderman Schultz.
In ordinance authorizing execution of an agreement between Jordan's Place and the city of Borton, Missouri.
I will entertain a motion for the second reading, passage of bill number 58-17. So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Alderman Ock, seconded by Alderman Schultz.
In ordinance authorizing execution of an agreement between Jordan's Place and the city of Borton, Missouri.
Roll call, roll please.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Gary Miller?
No.
Alderman Schultz?
Yes.
Alderman Schell Harvey?
Yes.
Motion carries 3-1 with two absent, or bill carries, I'm sorry, 3-1, two absent. All right, I'll entertain a motion for the first reading of bill number 59-17. Thank you.
I'll second that.
I'm still looking for it.
Motion made by Alderman Schultz, seconded by Alderman Schultz.
In ordinance read adopting chapter 130 conflicts of interest of the municipal code of the city of Borton, Missouri.
I'll entertain a motion for the second reading, passage of bill number 59-17.
Can we get an explanation of the ordinance?
Oh, I'm sorry, you did ask for that earlier.
No, it was something else, but I, so this is something we didn't talk about earlier, is getting this up to speed, the conflict of interest thing, just stay
We have to read adopt our conflict of interest ordinance, is it every two years, Meloni? Yeah, and send it in, so we really don't modify it. It's pretty much become a standardized municipal ordinance every two years, but by state law we're required to read adopt.
So we're doing something because the state's requiring it?
Yes, yeah. We make sure everybody stays in compliance with it.
Motion for, entertaining the motion for a second reading and passage of bill number 59-17.
So moved.
Second. Motion made by Alderman Gary Miller, seconded by Alderman Ock.
In ordinance read adopting chapter 130 conflicts of interest of the municipal code of the city of Borton, Missouri.
Roll call, roll please.
Alderman Gary Miller?
Yes.
Alderman Schultz?
Yes.
Alderman Schell Harvey?
Yes.
Bill passes 4-0 with two absent. I will entertain a motion for the first reading of bill number 60-60-17.
So moved. Second.
Motion made by Alderman Schultz, seconded by Alderman Schultz.
In ordinance accepting the plaid of the subdivision known as Boozy Cruise Edition by the city of Borton, Missouri.
I'll entertain a motion for the second reading, passage of bill number 60-17.
So moved.
Second. Motion made by Alderman Gary Miller, seconded by Alderman Ock.
In ordinance accepting the plaid of the subdivision known as Boozy Cruise Edition by the city of Borton, Missouri.
Roll call, roll please.
Alderman Schultz?
Yes.
Alderman Schell Harvey?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Gary Miller?
Yes.
Bill passes 4-0 with two absent. I will entertain a motion for first reading of bill number 61-17.
Call for first reading. I'm so moved, I'm sorry.
It's all right. I can roll with either one. Second. Motion made by Alderman Schultz, seconded by Alderman Ock.
In ordinance submitting chapter 410 subdivision regulations, section 410.080 C1, section 410.140 A and C, section 410.210 A 6D, and section 410.220 C10 and D of the municipal code of the city of Borton, Missouri regarding sidewalks.
I love that bill. I'll entertain a motion for the second reading and passage of bill number 61-17.
So moved. Second.
Motion made by Alderman Schultz, seconded by Alderman Schultz.
In ordinance submitting chapter 410 subdivision regulations, section 410.080 C1, section 410.140 A and C, section 410.210 A 6D, section 410.220 C10 and D of the municipal code of the city of Borton, Missouri regarding sidewalks.
Roll call, roll please.
Alderman Schell Harvey?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Gary Miller?
Yes.
Alderman Schultz?
Yes.
Bill passes 4-0 with two absent, and I will say, folks, she doesn't get credit for it, but that's a tongue twister to have to go through, so I appreciate her doing that, and I'm glad we don't have to read those. I'll entertain a motion for the first reading of bill number 62-17.
So moved. Second.
Motion made by Alderman Schultz, seconded by Alderman Schell Harvey.
In ordinance accepting the plaid of the subdivision known as Ruthers Estates, formerly known as Ruthers subdivision by the city of Borton, Missouri.
I'll entertain a motion for the second reading and passage of bill number 62-17.